Good afternoon, everyone. We're just waiting a few more people to join. Mr. Chair, I think we have everybody here. Do we want to get started?
Okay, very good. Why don't we uh why don't we start the study session and I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Castro?
Sounds good. Welcome everyone to today's study session. Today is April twenty seventh. And we have a few cases today, but before we get to that, I just have a few announcements. We have a couple of new faces here. We have our newest board member joining us. Her name is Arida Schubert. And she is the mayor's appointee. And so this is going to be her first hearing that she's attending. So please join me in welcoming her.
Welcome.
And then our legal counsel is not going to be joining us today. So we do have Perry Galinsky, who's going to be substituting. So she'll be here in place of Roy. And we also have a new zoning administrator joining us. Her name is Lisa Hamblin. Lisa has been with the department for, I'd say about four years. Started out as a lead planner. It is supervisor, then section manager, and now the zoning administrator. So I'm confident that Lisa is going to do a great job as the zoning administrator. So please join me in welcoming her. This is also her first public hearing, presiding as zoning administrator. So yes, so it's going to be good things to come.
You're welcome.
Thank you, and thanks, Mark. And please be patient with me if I miss a step I'm supposed to take during the meeting. I'm still learning. Thank you.
Absolutely. You're welcome. Okay, let me just get the agenda up here today. Okay, did everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So let's get started with the study session. So we have an upcoming case for May. Few of you have already responded to the quorum check. It is called the downtown dispensary. It's addressed as two two one E six street. And this is actually an appeal of the zoning administrator's determination regarding the setback between medical marijuana dispensary and a school. The zoning administrator termination determined that the school that there is a school that's located within the required setback. So the proposed expansion of that downtown dispensary was not allowed to occur. So the appellants are asserting that the actual location of the the school is not a school and that it's actually a business. So that will be the case that will be coming forward for next month. So as again, most of you have already responded. If I didn't respond to you, just follow up or you can let me know right now if you're going to be able to attend that May twenty fifth public hearing.
I'll attend, Mark.
Yeah, I already did respond in the affirmative.
Right, Mike. Thank you, Mike. And I think Bruce too, you responded, and Miranda. And Jesse. Lee, will you be able to make that meeting next month? Thank you.
Margaret, Jesse, yes, I will be.
Thank you, Jesse. Okay, so before we talk about today's cases, for the record, you should have received in an email, the approval protest map with the comments and the motion templates for the cases that are being heard today. If you did not receive it, please let me know and I'll make sure I get that forwarded to you. So our first case for today is going to be C ten twenty two zero two. It's white and treadway lot line adjustment and it's it says eighty six West Simpson Street and it's an H O three zone. So the applicant is proposing to do a lot line adjustment, essentially just moving the lot line between the addresses of ninety two and eighty six West Simpson Street to the east. The purpose for this is so that they can construct a carport, I believe is what it is. The on the property that's addressed as ninety two West Simpson Street. So in doing and applying for the lot line adjustment, zoning flagged it for having a reduced lot size for the property that's addressed as eighty six West Simpson Street and for not meeting the side yard setback. So the applicant today is going to be requesting a variance variances to allow the lot area for eighty six West Simpson Street to be reduced from the required minimum of five thousand square feet to approximately three thousand three hundred and seventy nine point five square feet. And they're also requesting to allow the building yard perimeters yard setback for eighty six West Simpson Street to be reduced from ten feet to four feet as measured to the reposition west line, west line. Engineering section of the Planning and Development Services Department doesn't have any objection or adverse comments. We also consulted with our historic preservation officer, seeing that it is located in the H P Z overlay. Our historic preservation officer confirmed that historic review is not required for this lot line adjustment. So we went ahead and moved forward with processing the variance application. Planning and Development Services Department recommends the approval of the applicant's requested variances. And the reason being is that the streetscape of the the lot line adjustment is not going to change. There are several, you know, several properties in the neighborhood. It's a historic location. So there's a lot of properties that are odd configurations and a lot of them don't meet the minimum lot sizes. So it's um it's pretty consistent with the neighborhood. So there was no, there was objection on staff's part. So we recommend approval. To date, we have received one approval and one protest. And I'm sure if you receive email, you saw those comments regarding the protests. And I I can speak to that in that they were talking about. My personal opinion is that they were thinking about that this had to go through a historic review process, which it does not. If they are building a carport and they are applying for a building permit, that's when it will need to go through the historic review process. But for this application, they are simply asking for a lot line adjustment and a reduction in the lot size in a building setback that's for a structure that's already existing. So again, just keep that in mind that this is not an application that is proposing to construct anything at this time. Again, it's just a lot line adjustment. So and it's very consistent with what's existing in the neighborhood. So I will open it up to any questions. If anybody needs any clarification, feel free to ask.
Mark, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, you know, reading the initial application process or paperwork. And the owner has sort of understated the distance that they're going to extend that eastern lot line. He states fifty inches more or less. If you look at what is currently on the assessors records and what is on the new survey, it's actually eleven and a half feet. It's not fifty inches. There's also on the second page of the survey, there's an ingress egress easement of twenty three and a half feet. Granted in twenty twenty, I wondered if you knew whose easement that is. And the third problem I had was that there were no architectural drawings included in anywhere in the paperwork on this. So those are my three issues.
Okay, Kathy, to answer your question regarding the architectural drawings first, I'll address that first. Since this is just a lot line adjustment, there are no architectural plans that are required at this time. It's just a survey, a record of survey with the legal descriptions that are required. Um, the second item.
Do you want me to repeat?
Yeah, repeat that.
It's okay. Who owns that ingress ease ingress egress easement of twenty three and a half feet? It's shown on the second page of the survey. And it seems to be where everybody comes in and parks. But I wondered who owns that easement? It was granted in twenty twenty?
I'm not sure, Kathy. That could be the property owners. He's that's granted between the two properties. But that'd be a great question to ask the applicant when they come up for their presentation.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to add that the properties are owned by the same people. So we can assume that the owner of the easement as well.
What was your other question? Jump in. Do we have, do we just jump in with comments or like, how does that kind of work with discussion?
That's fine. You could raise your hand.
Okay. Um, yeah, I had a, I had a few. I wrote down a few questions. I read the protest with great interest and it seemed to raise a lot of concerns. I understand the issue about how approval of this case isn't approval of a structure or carport or storage, but it seems to me that the request is predicated on the idea that it'll accommodate this kind of structure. So I guess I still am curious if we have a clear idea of the likelihood that construction of this structure would be approved by the historic zoning board. It's like moving the lot line if like they're not going to be able to build the thing they want to build.
That's a great point. That's going to be a risk that the property owners need to consider because we, you know, if if the board grant the variances to approve the requested variances, they still need to go through the historic review process for any structure that's proposed in that new buildable area. So I mean, it could be you know, space that, you know, they can't construct because they can't get it through the design review process.
So that's just like a risk that they're gonna, they're gonna take, basically.
Right.
If this moves forward. Okay. Um, the other thing that stood out to me about the protest was that they said there's already enough space for side by side parking and that no moving of the lot line is necessary. And I I was under the impression that the standard is to go with the least amount of modifications that are needed. So I'm just wondering if there are other factors that should be taken into account or if they're correct that like there's already enough parking space.
Can you see the aerial right now?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is where the lot line is currently. So yes, there is sufficient space in here. They did side by side parking. But that's what the they want to adjust this lot line. So it's over here so that they can create the structure on this side and make it part of this parcel here.
I guess I'm still at a loss as to why, like, why that should be approved and why, I mean, I guess I'm still missing the justification.
I think this, they want this to be their primary. This is going to be their primary residence. So they want the carport on their lot rather than on this lot here. Because this lot here will, I think it's proposed that their mother will move into this lot here.
Yeah, right, right. Yeah.
So so this is going to be the mother's lot. And then here is the is the property owners with the carport they want on their property.
That makes sense. I guess I am also thinking about this in the context of like longer term impacts on the neighborhood and like if in the future, you know, that lot ends up, that property ends up getting sold. You know, is there feasibility for that to like get used again easily? Or is this such a specific arrangement to this specific property owner? You know, like, how does it contribute to development patterns long term?
Yeah, and that that's a great question to ask the applicant what they what they plan on doing in the future with it. I'm not sure if they plan on selling it, but as far as I know, they are saying that their mother would live in that in that eighty six West Simpson Street lot.
Just a couple of other things. Sorry. So one of them had to do with the runoff issue with the silt. I was very curious to know if there's a way to substantiate that kind of claim. I noticed that the protest talked about how there are a lot of other options if that's truly an issue and that moving this lot line isn't the only solution.
No, there wasn't any real substantive evidence regarding the runoff unless we actually went out there and saw for ourselves. This is just the applicants. You know, their perspective on how things are moving through, you know, comment in West Simpson Street, how that drainage flows. So we don't have any, I would say staff's information on that. So nothing to guarantee that that is actually a problem.
Okay, that's good to know. It's just I'm a big environmentalist. I'm concerned about runoff. And so if there are opportunities. The other concern that I had was the claim that having a carport like this is like really out of line with the character of the neighborhood. And I wondered if we had any information about how many carports are in that area. I'm pretty familiar with that intersection. And I'm at a loss as to like be able to picture parking structures in that area on properties.
Yeah, I don't see too many carports in the area. So that's why I think they're going to have a tough time trying to get it through historic review. But again, this this application is really just for the lot line adjustment.
Gotcha.
And that's all the board. That's the purview of the board for today is is that structure.
Cool. Okay, I think those were all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Great questions.
Mark. Lee Pony, I just, the the in the protest, the idea and also what my colleague brought up of the lot line being four feet versus a larger number, is there any, can we have some clarification from staff on that? That seems to be something that should be clarified.
Yeah, that that was an error in the project description. It was an oversight. The actual request to the board is correct. What they are asking for is the lot size. So they just did not, they weren't, you know, as an error when they described more, they were moving it over to the east, but the actual lot size in the surveys that were provided are accurate. So that's what the the application and the variance requests are based on.
So the application of a request of moving it four feet is correct or incorrect?
No, that that's incorrect. It's the, that's the project description. There is the actual variance request. On I think it's page three or four where they actually state what they are requesting before the board.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mark, I'm still unclear about the division of this this ingress egress easement and looking at what we have, it seems that it's effectively being divided in half. And the petitioners half will have a carport. So will the eastern parcel eighty six West Simpson still have parking in that area? Then is that what they're doing is just splitting this in half?
So there's street parking and then they have the carport parking and I'm almost certain that they're going to allow these six to use the carport. So it'd be a shared parking arrangement. So they're not really splitting the carport.
So the carport will cover the entire opening then and will be used by both houses? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So essentially they'll go on doing what they've been doing, which is a joint parking area, only now it will have a carport. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Hey, Mark, this is Bruce.
Bruce.
Yeah, just just an observation is there that if you look at the aerial that you have up on the screen, certainly there is like no parking associated with the corner lot between Convent and Simpson there. And most of it seems to be associated with the lot next door. So moving that lot allows the and so should at some time these owners, which are the same owners for both lots, by not by get sold off or one they sell one to the or another to somebody else. That then kind of helps or allows that parking to actually take place on that Convent Simpson lot. And the one that's just associated with it still has parking. And so and the runoff would have nothing to do with it. They moved the lot line or not. So I don't know where that came from, from the way that comment came from anyway. So I I I certainly support this this thing so that they can kind of make it a sellable lot and have some parking. Because there's really not a lot of parking on any of these lots. If you really look at them. This is down in the down in the barrio and how we try to apply a lot of our more current zoning and and requirements to these this historic district is still sort of a more current zoning and, and requirements to these, this historic district is still sort of a mystery to me anyway. So anyway, that's my observation and so I don't have questions.
Thank you, Bruce. Do we have any additional comments on this case or questions?
Not for me.
Okay, here we go.
Oh, okay.
Is it possible that we could reverse this order and see how their permitting goes for the carport before granting the lot line change? Now, if.
You can't, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but you can't, you can't kind of permit something on a piece of property that doesn't exist.
Well, but their owners have both properties, so it does. So I just wonder how they're going to do with the permitting process and you know, if moms couldn't live there, it's, it's not going to make any difference anyway.
Yep, Kathy, it can't move forward with the permitting process until the lot split is, is done. So if it doesn't, if it doesn't get approved, then there is no carport that, that they can construct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
Let's move on to, okay, so the second case is twenty, C ten twenty-two oh three. Lopez Residence New Carports and Storage Shed, and this is located at ninety twenty-four East Kirkpatrick Circle. So this is a single-family residence on the, here. There we go. Okay, so this is the property here. Originally, the project was just to construct a carport located in the front of the residence here. Zoning flagged it for two structures that weren't meeting setbacks and didn't appear to have building permits. So it's this one carport here and a storage shed on this side here. And so that's what triggered the variance request is because these are right at zero setback. Otherwise, if these structures were not an issue, then the applicant could have gone through the DDO process just for the carport. So that's why it's before the board today because of the zero setbacks on the unpermitted structures on both sides of the residence. So today, the applicant is here before the board and they're going to be asking for the existing carport on the west side to remain with the reduced permitting yard setback to zero feet. And then to, to allow the existing storage shed on the east side of residents to remain with a reduced lot size from, I mean, reduced lot size, a reduced setback from six feet to zero feet. And then to allow a new carport at the front of the residence with a reduced setback from twenty feet to four feet as measured to the north lot line. Engineering Section and Planning and Development Services does not have any objections or adverse comments. Staff has no objection to the applicant's requested variances subject to two conditions. Condition A, no motor vehicle parking in the area between the carport attached to the front of the residence and the street. And B, the carport at the front of the residence shall not be enclosed. A, as of, as of today, we've have only received one written protest. And if you read the protest, it seems that the, the person that submitted it may have been confused with a different case because they were talking about young kids parking and that's actually the sorority case, which is the third case we're hearing today. So, and because the, the public hearing notice includes all three cases, I think maybe that person was confused and actually was protesting about the sorority case, but nevertheless, they still filled out the protest form, so we're still counting it as a protest. So I will go ahead and open it up for questions now.
Yeah, Mark, I've got one. You've got three conditions listed here. The third letter C, existing carport on west side shall comply with a fire code in every aspect. Did you note that because there is some thought there is a non-compliance matter?
I, I forgot about that condition. Yes, thanks for reminding me. That is the third, that is correct. That is a third condition that we're adding to.
And let me just make a general comment, Mark, and I apologize for interrupting the audio.
Sure.
At least at my end, it's not very good. I'm not hearing you very clearly.
And can everybody else hear me fine?
I hear you fine, Mark.
I can hear you fine.
Okay, okay. I'll try to speak in a little bit more clearly, Mike.
Okay.
So that third condition that you just read off, that, that is a condition that I meant to add. So that is, that is correct, that we do need that condition in there.
No, but the question was, did you add it because you were aware of some non-compliance matter already, or were you just threw that in just as a caution?
Because the structure is at a zero setback and it was never reviewed for a building permit. There are fire code regulations. Anything that's less than three feet away from a property line needs to be rated for fire code. So we threw that condition in there just to make sure that they were aware that they need to get it reviewed for fire code compliance and that may require, you know, substantial types of material or something like that or a wall.
So in other words, we could approve the variance, but then they could fail to meet fire code regulations. Is that correct?
They would, yeah, they would need to meet the fire code regulations for that structure.
But there is a, an out for them. It's not merely that the fire code says that the structure has to be setback three feet. It can encroach within that three feet if they upgrade the material.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah, hey, Mark, would, would they not have, as soon as they went in for a permit for this structure and, and they found out they needed variance for it, is wouldn't they have found that this carport and this storage shed were not even permitted in the first place?
Right, that's why it was flagged. It was flagged because they, they did the research and there was no, no building permits assigned to those projects. So zoning flagged it, so they do need to come back and have the, the structure reviewed.
I've got no other questions. Thank you.
Nothing further.
Mark, a quick question. When you have conditions for some project like this, forgive me because I'm new to this process, but when you have conditions in here, it seems like that, you know, they sort of would get buried, you know, in deep into a process and not be at the forefront. How often do we?
Lee, you froze there.
How often do you?
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Did I make it back yet?
You're back. Can you repeat the question?
Sure. How, the use of these, these types of, sorry, I forgot my wording, but basically when you have conditions for variance, how, you know, those seem to get buried in this process, how important are they to, you know, upholding what the UDC is and the variant, you know, our process here when you have conditions like this in them?
That, that's a great question, Lee. So we try to encourage, when we do recommend conditions, we like the conditions enforceable. So what, if this gets approved, the applicant will be required to put the conditions of the variances on their plans. Plans will then be reviewed for compliance and if it, if one of the conditions stay, you know, like here, it says, do you know, to make sure that the structure is rated for fire code. They will need to demonstrate that on their plans before it can actually be approved and signed off.
Great, thank you. That helps.
Any other questions for this case?
Not for me.
Okay. Moving along to our third case for today is C ten twenty-two oh four Alpha Chi Omega Sorority House and located at seventeen seventy-five East First Street, Zoned R three. So, let me get the aerial here. So it's near the intersection of Speedway and Campbell on the UV campus. And what the applicant is proposing to do is to demolish a portion of the building and construct a new two-story addition, particularly in this area right here. Because of this expansion, they're losing non-conformity of the parking spaces here. So they need to, all the parking would need to meet current regulations. So the variances that they're asking before the board is to allow a reduced side permitting yard setback from the east side of the building to the east lot line here. And then they're asking for a reduction of required vehicle spaces from thirty-six to twenty-five spaces, and that's going to be eleven onsite here. And then fourteen in the right of way, which would be seven spaces here and seven spaces here. And the third variance that they're asking for is to allow maneuvering directly into the alley and street for the fourteen spark parking spaces that are located in the right of way along the North Alley and Martin Avenue. All is shown on the submitted plans. The Engineering Section of Planning and Development Services has no objection or adverse comment. I reached out to Department of Transportation and Mobility and they have no objection to the continued use of the alley or the street for maneuvering directly into a parking space. Staff recommends approval of the applicant's requested variances. To date, we have received a total of two written approvals and zero protests. I will go ahead and open it up for questions.
Yeah, Mark, this is Bruce. I, I have a, worked for the university for a number of years in the facilities and the planning area and there's this whole university district here that, you know, university planning district. And that's really on, pretty much on the University of Arizona property, more or less, probably more than less, but it's, it's kind of interesting that we still have getting fobbed here because this is like university, everything, everything except maybe across the alley, of course, is all commercial zoning along Speedway Boulevard. But all this is just, yeah, it's university, it's sorority houses, it's their police department, there, there's the ball field not too far away from here. Do we still, I, obviously we have something to say about what goes on at these sorority houses. It's kind of in my mind that this is kind of University of Arizona stuff and why we're even bothering with it is sort of interesting.
Bruce, we, we've had several, we've actually had several Board of Adjustment cases right along First Street. There's the one across the way here on North Martin Avenue. And then there's another one, I think it was on, yeah, it's on Mountain. Mountain First. So there was the other sorority over here. So we've had, we had several cases. And each one of these cases asked for reduction in parking or elimination of parking.
Mark, I, I've got a question. I think that relates to what Bruce was talking about. This property is subject to City of Tucson regulations, I presume, because it's privately owned land. Even though it's in the university area, probably not owned by the state or the university itself. Is that fair to say?
That'd be fair to say, Mark.
Okay.
I don't want to have no problem with this. You know, as long as it's really there, I think they're probably increasing the number of beds associated with the sorority and therefore it starts to fool around with their required parking, which is really what most of this variance is about.
I think they're increasing by four, four bed crews, I think is what they had on their application. Do we have any additional questions?
Not for me.
Okay, hearing none. The time is one ten right now. We'll go ahead and break. And then we'll come back at one thirty to start the public hearing. Go ahead, Mike.
Mark, I, I do have something I need to let you know about. I, and I did indicate this in a email to Heather the other day. Unfortunately, I've got a medical appointment I've got to get to later on this afternoon. So the latest I can stay is probably two thirty. If we're wrapping up a case, I can go maybe another ten or fifteen minutes. But if there, if we have not completed the agenda by that time, then I'll have to excuse myself and turn the reins over to the vice chair. But it looks like we have a, a quorum even in my absence, so that's good.
Yes, and the vice chair is aware that he may, may resume the responsibility of the chair should you leave.
Okay.
Okay, we'll see everybody back at one thirty. Just go ahead and turn off your, your cameras and go ahead and mute yourselves. Mr. Chair, it's one thirty. Should we get started?
I am all set now. So if we're all back, I'll call the meeting to order. And the first thing I'll do is ask Ms. Hamblin for a roll call, if you would.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Michael Marks.
Here.
Bruce Dawson.
Here.
Kathy Kugish. Jessie Lugo. Do not see Jessie on the meeting. Lee Pagni.
Here.
Miranda Schubert.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Okay, very good. For the benefit of all those in the virtual audience, as chair, I have a couple of preliminary comments I need to read at first. I'd like to welcome you to the regular meeting of the City of Tucson's Board of Adjustment. This meeting is being recorded, and by joining, you are giving consent to the meeting being recorded. At the onset, we, the staff will provide a staff report for each case. At the conclusion of staff's presentation, the applicant or the applicant's representative will have the opportunities to speak. For the record, please tell the board your name and address and state your request. At the conclusion of the applicant's presentation, other persons wishing to speak in favor and then in opposition will have the opportunity. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand or use the raise hand feature located in the reactions tab at the bottom of your screen. And be sure to state your name and address when recognized by the chair. The chair may allow the applicant the opportunity for a brief rebuttal after any opposition may have spoken. I will then close the public hearing and open it up for discussion by board members. And at the conclusion of that period, the board may offer a motion to be voted upon. All presentations today must be directed solely to the board and not to staff or members of the audience. All presentations to the board must also be only on those items brought before the board. Presentation on matters unrelated to the request will not be heard. The decision of the Board of Adjustment may be appealed to the Superior Court of Pima County by filing a complaint for special action with the Pima County Superior Clerk's Office within thirty days of the board's decision. For additional information on this filing process, please contact the Superior Court Clerk's Office or an attorney. For additional information on this filing process, please contact the Superior Court Clerk's Office or an attorney after today's public hearing. If you're going to give testimony today, please be brief and to the point. Repetition of testimony already given by other witnesses is not necessary. And the chair may invoke a time limit if deemed necessary. Before you testify, please remember to state your name and address, and all testimony to the board must be given under oath. At this time, I want to turn to staff and ask them to raise their right hands. And do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, very good. To all those not speaking, I want to remind you, please be sure to mute yourself and turn your camera off. And that, I mean, non-board members, unless you are addressing the board. For each witness who wants to testify, they will need to be sworn in individually. Please be sure you, yeah, I think I've already stated that. Mr. Castro, at this point, I'd ask you to provide the staff report for the first case.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we begin, I would just like to point out that Jessie Lugo has joined us, so he is, he is present. Our first case for today is C-10-22-02, White and Treadway Lot Line Adjustment, Glenn White and Mona Treadway, 86 West Simpson Street, HO3. The applicant's property is an approximately 4,715 square foot lot, Zone HO3, an office zoning classification, and developed with a single-family residence. The applicant is proposing to reposition the lot line between 86 and 92 West Simpson Street, revise part for 92 West Simpson Street, and create a reduced lot size and reduce building setback rest lot line to the residence of 86 West Simpson. The applicant is requesting the following variances. Allow the lot area for 86 West Simpson Street to be reduced from the required minimum of 5,000 square feet to approximately 3,379.5 square feet. And two, allow the building perimeter yard setback, 86 West Simpson Street, to be reduced from 10 feet to 4 feet as measured from the repositioned west line, all as shown on the submitted plans. The engineering section of Planning and Development Services Department has no objection or adverse comments. Planning and Development Services staff recommends approval of the applicant's requested variance. It is the opinion of staff that granting other variances will not constitute a grant of special privileges. Inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and zone in which such property is located will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other property improvements, and will not substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. The date, we have received a total of one written approval and one written protest. For the record, board members have been provided a copy of the approved protest forms. Mr. Chair and members of the board, this concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. Are there any questions for Mr. Castro and part of any of the board members? Okay, hearing none. Again, thank you, Mr. Castro, and let me ask the petitioner, is he or she present?
Yes, I am, and so is my wife.
Okay, are, could you turn both of your cameras on and let, or the one camera if you're on together? And is your wife, hi, how are you? If you're both going to be speaking, I'd like to get you both to announce your, your names, and then I'll swear you both in. If your wife can move into the camera shot, that would be preferable.
Here, I'm actually on a separate computer. Yep.
Let me ask you both to raise your right hands, and do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, why don't we start with you, ma'am? Could you state your name and address?
Mona Treadway, 92 West Simpson Street.
Okay, and then, sir, if you do the same.
Glenn White, 92 West Simpson Street.
Okay, so who's going to start the presentation?
I'm happy to.
Okay.
And I'm not sure what to do beyond what, what the, the staff report said, where we are asking for two variances in order to build some secure storage and covered parking. Somebody just pulled up a picture of it, I believe. So in between 86 and 92 West Simpson, both properties that we own, the property line right now, where we would like to, to position the carport, basically, would be straddling the property line. So we're proposing moving it just about 50 inches to the east. Are there any questions on that part?
You know, I think I didn't hear the end of your last sentence. I don't know whether you froze temporarily or what, but could you repeat the last sentence?
Glenn, you're muted.
Muted, sorry. Moving the property line just about 50 inches to the east.
Okay.
Which is kind of strange when I do, when I look at this versus going out and seeing where the pins are. So I did send, I think it was to Heather Thrall, pictures of with a tape measure showing where the original pin is and where the proposed lot line is. And then when I, when I checked in about the original pin, because the, I think a satellite picture shows the lot line for 92 West Simpson much farther to the west. The surveyors that did the original survey when we bought the two properties said that the aerial view that the city has often doesn't exactly show where the property line is, and, and so that, that's where that little discrepancy comes in, I think.
But this survey that is being shown on the screen now is reliable, and it does clarify where the original property line is and where the new property line proposed to be will be.
Right.
Okay, okay. Are there any other comments? From either party? Okay, let me open it up to, well, first, let me open it up to the board members, and does any board member have a question of either of the, of the two that are representing the case?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I, I, I am curious, is, when I looked at the street view, I could see that the residents on the corner covenant, where you, where you obviously live, looks very much like it was an apartment building at one point. Is it, is it always been a single-family residence, or was it an apartment building at one time?
I, I don't know for sure. I suspect that it might have been either an apartment or businesses, because there are, what I think.
There's four entries.
Yeah, four entry doors.
That's just what I was looking at. I was kind of curious. It raised my interest, so.
Yeah, there's two on Convent and two on Simpson.
I think, though, for at least the last 22 years, it's been a single-family residence.
Well, thank you.
Yep.
Let me ask the question. First, you own both parcels, one and two, correct?
Correct.
And you want to build the future carport straddling the new common property line, correct?
Well, no, if the new property line, if we, if we receive the variance for the new property line, it would not then straddle. It would be all on the property for 92 West Simpson.
And that's parcel one?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, and that carport would just serve parcel one's needs, or would it also serve the needs of parcel two?
The intention of it is to primarily serve parcel one. However, parcel two is likely going to become a mother-in-law unit for Mona's mother, and, and then that person would, would be able to park there.
Okay. Very good. I'll ask one more time, is, are there any questions from any other board members?
Mr. Marks, I have a question for the applicant.
Go ahead, Ms. Kugish.
You have said several times that you're moving the lot line for parcel one approximately 50 inches. However, your survey seems to indicate that you're moving it actually 11 and a half feet if you compare what the assessor's office has currently with your new survey. So it appears to me that you are dividing this, this open space, this ingress-egress easement between the two properties. Is that correct?
I don't believe it's an easement.
There is a recorded easement on it, on the second page of your survey, done in 2020.
I'd have to look, which part of it is the, is an easement?
The part between the, the two houses.
Glenn, it's what's showing on, you can actually see it on the screen there, yeah.
Yeah.
It's just so small. Okay. Okay.
So it's currently an easement that's been recorded. I'd like to know, if you know, who has that easement? And then if you are intending to continue to share this area with the house at 86 West Simpson, parcel two.
The general intention is, is not. It's for, it's for it to be a part of 92 West Simpson.
Okay, so you're.
It will be available, like, when my mother-in-law moves in.
So are you planning on putting a wall or some sort of barrier between the two pieces then, once you're, once you get your new lot line?
That is part of our consideration, yes. A short wall.
Okay, so. So according to your survey, you'll have about half the easement, and 86 West Simpson will have half of this easement. Is that your intention?
I'm not sure I'm understanding when you say splitting the easement for it. And that's just my ignorance around the terminology, I think.
Okay. How, well, let me ask you a, a separate question. How will parcel two, how will 86 West Simpson park a car?
Yeah, so it'll be, it'll be like the other properties across the street in that there's, there's space right in front, so it'll be permitted parking.
Oh, so they will end up on the street then?
Which is, yeah, and that's been the way that it is right now as well, just given the way that that parking happens in that space. But yes.
Okay.
Okay, if that concludes your questions and comments, Ms. Kugish, and if I don't hear from any other board member that they have a comment or a question, I will ask the virtual audience, is there anybody else that wishes to speak to this matter, either in favor or in opposition? Although I will, if I hear one from each category, if there is one from each category, I want to hear those in favor first. Is there anybody of that nature? Could you notify me by the, by the raising hand function in Zoom? Well, if.
Mr. Chair, we do have somebody who would like to speak.
And do we know whether that person's in favor or in opposition?
If you're referring to Judge, actually, my name is Julian Goldfine, and I am in opposition to the application.
Well, ma'am, do you have, could you turn your camera on? Here you are. Okay, good. Let me ask you to raise your right hand, and do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Could you state your name and your address?
My name is Julian Goldfine, and my address is 440440 South Convent Avenue. And I also own the, it's a four-plex, and I own the, the entire property, so that's 440 to 446.
Okay, what are your comments?
So, um, I, first of all, I would wanted to clarify that the, that the, that the board has had a chance to look at my written objection.
We have gotten your objection. That's part of the package that we've been given.
Okay, so you will have seen, and maybe I can take you back to the photographs attached to my objection. Are you able to view those? I don't know how I can show them to the.
I think we can each open them up.
Okay. So let me just begin by giving everyone a, an overview of, of what we're talking about on the ground and my understanding of it, because there has been this discussion about where exactly the lot lines are, and I think that's very crucial to understand. So photo one shows the kind of overview of what one of the board members, I believe, caused the easement area. It's essentially between the two properties, 92 is on the right, and the corner of 86, you can see with the, with the notice sign on the left. So photographs one and two show that area, and you can see a little mini Cooper Park there. And towards the back of that area, you see a little tent structure, a little carport structure. Or I should say shelter, not carport. I think it's probably too small for that, but a little shelter structure. A close-up of that area is shown in par, in photo three. Then photo four angles towards the western wall of 86, and you can see a little porch area there. And a close, a closer-up view of that is in photo five. So you can see, really, that is essentially the front door of the property, or it has been used for that for some, as so long as the property has been a single family. In fact, the, the building was built as a duplex, but duplex offices, and it later became duplex residence, and then more recently, as it is used as a single family. But that essentially has always, to my understanding, has been the front door for at least one, the, the, the duplex unit to the west. And there is, as you can see, moving through the photographs through six, you can see the other side of number 86, and you see a little garden gate there. And then if you, we zoom in a bit closer in photographs seven and eight. And really, if we look on eight, you can kind of get a, if you look through the gate, photograph eight. You can kind of see the little yard that's there with, again, a some sort of a awning or porch structure there. So then, turning now to the plan that we were just looking at, at page 10 of the application. If we can do that. So where my photos were taken from was Simpson Street. And now I hope you can have a better idea of, you have the big house on the corner. If you were fake, you know, standing on Simpson Street and looking at it as my photos were, the photograph shows 92 on the right and 86 on the left. And then between those two, we saw a kind of open dusty area with parking and so on. And then between those two, we saw a kind of open dusty area with parking and so on. Now, what this what what this shows is there's two things that are critical. One is the original property line, and I don't know if if, I don't know if you're able to see that, or I don't know if you're, if I'm, I'm pointing to it, but I don't know if my pointer is coming through on the screen.
No, we can see that map on our screens.
Yeah, no, but the there's so there's a notation that says original property line. And that's pointing to a line, exactly. And then if you go over approximately, it's actually about twenty-one feet. It's the new property line, which is proposed. And that, according to the information that the applicants have given, is four foot off the it's it produces a four-foot setback, so that porch that we saw in the photographs, that the boundary would be four foot in front of that porch, essentially just hard against that porch. So what's happening here is that the property line is being taken almost completely from one side of the parking area to the other side. And the effect of that is, I don't know where fifty inches came from that the applicant stayed. But what we do know and what they have in their application is that the reduction in square footage of parcel two is something like thirteen hundred and seventeen square feet. And if you divide that by the depth of the lot, you can see that the actual distance between the old property line and the new proposed property line is about twenty-one feet. So that's a significant move. And it also means that the square footage of parcel two is, which is already under the required five thousand foot, square foot lot minimum, it's going to reduce it by twenty-eight percent, which is a huge number, to thirty-three thousand uh, sorry, three thousand and three hundred and seventy-nine square feet. So you're taking a parcel which is already under the minimum and taking it down by an extra twenty-eight percent. And in so doing, you're taking the property line smack up against the essentially the front door of that property. Because there is no, on Simpson Street, there's no entrance to number eighty-six. You either have to go through the yard to the west or the yard to the east. So from an aesthetic point of view, you're not only reducing, you know, you're 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 basically locking this area into an area that has virtually no outside yards, certainly on the west, which destroys the symmetry that was, you know, apparent in this building, allowing unit one to have one side and unit two to have the other side. Now, the only other significant thing is that when the, what, well, let me step back. My understanding is that the applicants applied, had plans doorknob for a carport, applied to the city to have those permitted. But were told, no, you can't do that because it straddles a property line, or it, you know, it's it's not in one or the other, it goes over. We don't have the benefit of having access to those plans. And I would have thought that would have been critical to this application, to see exactly what the applicants are proposing. But what it seems relatively clear is this, that the move from taking the lot line from the west of the property right the way to the east in order to put something there is must be a significantly greater move than moving the the property line westwards rather than eastwards to accommodate whatever parking structure it is adjacent, as an adjacent to parcel two. And then, of course, if parcel one wanted to use that that structure or whatever, some sort of arrangement could obviously be be made in the terms of a license or an easement or something, just in the way that has.
I wonder if you could sum up your opposition. I mean, you've made some very interesting observations, but what in a nutshell is your opposition to the request?
Well, there's a, there's a few things. First of all, this structure would be subject to historic review, so it's by no means a done deal. So this move would be essentially, they're asking for something which, if they don't get historic approval, is, you know, putting the cart before the horse. This is premised on historic approval, and i- in my submission, they're not going to get historic approval because carports just another thing in in our in our neighborhood, it's just not a, it's just not.
That's a good point, and I believe that the petitioners are aware of that. And I believe they've been instructed to go through this process first, to move the lot line, and if only if they're successful, will they be able to submit plans on the land where they want to and then be subject to the historic preservation zone.
Well, and in that case, I think it needs to be make made clear that they're only requesting this contingent upon getting that historic approval. Because there's no, if this is the rationale for the move, the rationale disappears if the historic approval isn't granted. So in other words, I would request that that if the board is minded to grant the the move, then it should do so contingent on historic advisory board approval of the proposed plans, because it's premised on that.
Okay.
Then the second, then really what it boils down to i- is this. Well, there's a couple of things. First of all, there's a requirement, I think it's number seven of the requirements, the findings that must be found, that the the move, the lot, the the variance that's requested is the minimum that will allow for the to like the action that's that's requested. And what I've been at pains to point out is that, in fact, this is, this is a huge move compared to the small move that would be required, that that could be given in order to allow them to build essentially as an adjacent to parcel two rather than parcel one. So we're asking to reduce a parcel size, which is already under the limit, by twenty-eight percent, when the alternative is to reduce parcel one by a very small fraction, and that lot is actually oversized. It's it's over five thousand square feet, so that really.
Well, fine, why don't we allow the petitioners to address some of the comments that you've made? I don't want to take too much longer listening to your comments, because I think I think you've made your point quite strong. So let, you know, unless there's some other points you want to make, I think we've we've heard your your opposition, and we'd like to give the petitioner the opportunity to reply to that.
Okay, I'd just like to add one thing in that case. This will not increase parking, it's not adding any parking spaces. It's going to have the same number, maybe even less, once they've built their structure than it does now. As for the comments they make about dust and runoff and so on, they have an obligation to mitigate that in any event, and it doesn't require a carport to do that. So that's a complete red herring. And and I just don't see how this is adding any parking space, there's parking there now. And and there'll be the same amount of parking spaces afterwards, so I just don't see how that argument even is a starship.
Well, thank you very much. We, I'm sure we'll consider all that you have said, and we'll ask the petitioners to address the key elements of that opposition. Before I ask the petitioners to rebut, I'd like to ask, is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak to this case? Hearing none, I'd like to return to the petitioners.
Next, it looks like you have a hand up with with Gregory Kendall.
Excuse me?
Said it looks like you have a hand up with Gregory Kendall.
Oh, is that, it, Mr., how do you, what is the last name? I'm not getting the full last name.
It's, my name's Greg Kirkendall.
Kirkendall, so you wish to speak to this case?
I was hoping to, just very briefly.
Yeah, why don't you turn your video on and then let me swear you in?
Sure.
Do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, state your name and address, please.
My name is Greg Kirkendall, and I live at three eight eight South Convent, just south and west of of the subject parcel.
Okay, why don't you proceed and you didn't state whether you oppose or support, would you first state if you are on one side of the ledger or the other?
I I don't necessarily support or oppose it, other than the fact that I'm only now learning that the movement of the lot line is not four feet, but is twenty-one feet. And I attended the neighborhood Zoom meeting along with Julianne and, I don't know, a half dozen other folks. It was held on on Valentine's Day, I remember. And at that time, all of us that were questioning what was going on from an aesthetic standpoint, as well as from a lot line movement standpoint, and how it would affect our our values of homes in the future and and the all of the questions that came up, all of those questions were based on the notion that the lot line movement from parcel one was going to go fifty inches or right around four feet to the east. And if it's actually going twenty-one feet to the east, I I think that's going to raise a number of questions with the folks that were interested in this issue. It it raises questions for me from the standpoint of how significantly reduced that parcel two is and the the uniformity of of the kind of lots that are that are present and homes that are present in the barrio. So I think that's something that should be taken into account by you all. It's certainly something that came as a surprise to me. And that's all I had to say.
The lot line, the dimension of that lot line change is is that just something you were aware of by the written documents that were submitted, or was that something that was said at the neighborhood meeting?
I became aware of it today when watching the this video conference. And I also saw it in Julianne's objection that I reviewed shortly before I came on to to watch this this hearing. But it it, what had been my understanding, I don't have it in front of me, but my recollection is that what we were presented to review prior to the neighborhood meeting had the had the proposal of moving the lot line for parcel one four feet, fifty inches, something to the east, not not what I'm hearing now is twenty-one feet to the east.
And what is the significance of that distinction, that difference in in distance? Physically, would things be no different, whether it was the shorter dimension versus a longer dimension? The the plan, as stated, is that there would be a carport placed between the two structures, all within the parcel one lot. But physically, there there, as far as what I've heard, there would not be any other change.
Are you asking me?
Yeah, I am.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't want to take somebody else's position if you were asking somebody else, I'm sorry. I think that it ma- makes a big difference in terms of the viability of parcel two in the future, in the event that that's sold off. And likewise, it makes a difference in terms of the way the rest of the neighborhood lots are perceived. If they're allowed to be twenty-eight percent smaller than 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 parcel two currently is, I think the number is five thousand square feet is what there is what the standard is. So if we're allowed, if you're begin to allow parcels to be carved up that small, I think it encourages development of tiny parcels, using this one as a precedent. But primarily, my my objection to this concept of it moving forward is that this was not the pretense that was presented to the to the to the neighborhood. And I don't think the neighborhood is aware that it's really twenty-one foot movement as opposed to a four-foot movement. If that's the case, I don't know for sure that that is the case, I just been learning it today.
Okay, okay, well, thank you very much for your comments, and I appreciate all of them. But i- unless you have something further to say, I'd like to move back and, assuming that there's nobody, no other third party that wishes to speak, and I'm gonna take a breath and wait for that person, if one does exist, to announce him or herself. But having not heard any response, I will then turn to the petitioners. And we would like some comments in in response to those just made by the two parties. So can I turn it back to you and could you could you make, you know, some reply to to those points?
Certainly, I'll start with the access to eighty-six West Simpson, where Ms. Goldfine said that there would, access would then be limited. The the access is is off of Simpson Street through the gate that she took pictures of. That's how folks go in and out. Our renters that have been in there have gone in and out of there. And and that will continue to exist. Regarding the the discrepancy between, is it twenty-one feet, eleven feet, forty-eight, fifty inches? I'm happy to have people come, I came up with the fifty inches when I went out and I looked at where the original pin was placed and is still there when we purchased the two properties two years ago. And where the proposed line is. If if Greg, if if you and Juliana want to come over after this meeting and see, I'm happy to show you, I mean, that that's where I come up with that number.
And that pin is in a different spot, right, than than that drawing and that?
Which I don't understand why, but it but it is, and it is the original pin. So I don't know if it's if it's if it's marking the eastern boundary of ninety-two West Simpson or the western boundary of eighty-six West Simpson, but it's 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 the pin that's in between the two properties that was placed there by the surveyors when we purchased the two properties. And the pin that is in place for the proposed line is, I'll bring a tape measure, it's it's less than fifty inches away.
I don't think.
I'm happy to.
Their comments on the distinction of the distance related to the technical nature of where that lot line was, but rather to the impact, the shifting, to the extent towards parcel two would have on maybe a future sale or the saleability of that lot. Is that something you can comment on?
This did come up in the community meeting, and and I'm just I I don't really understand what the big I mean, if 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 we. I mean, if 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 we do decide to sell that and we have no plans to sell that, whoever was to buy it would know what they're buying, like it they would know the size of the lot. That's just how how things work. So, um, I I don't know what else to say about that. Now, and then in terms of, you know, I think Juliana stated that the, uh, basically the lot line would be right up against the door. It it it's not, there's a porch, there's the door, there's a porch, and then there's another, there's a walkway. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Why don't you try to wrap it up? If you have anything further you feel is necessary for us to hear, go ahead and express it. Otherwise, I I would like to close the hearing.
Yeah, sure. I mean, I just, I I I know that there are other lots, especially across the street that are less than five thousand square feet. There's, um, uh, in terms of setbacks, our our neighbor to the, um, that's south. Um, you know, he had, and I think he was one of the people who who wrote in and said, I have no problem with this. I mean, he he has a structure that is right up against our fence. It's it's not ten feet away, it's not four feet away, it's it's maybe a foot away. And and I I that's just the way a lot of things, I believe, have have happened here um, in this old neighborhood over over time. Um, so I I don't feel like we're asking for anything out of the that 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 doesn't already exist in other areas of this neighborhood.
Okay, okay, let me wrap it up at that point and let me close the hearing. Let me turn to the board members and let them know that if they would like to, uh, offer some comments before a motion's made, uh, they can at this point. If a member wishes to make a motion, uh, at this point, uh, they're free to do so. So the
Mr. Chair.
To the other board members.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, this is Elisa Hamblin. I'd just like to make a point of clarification that the request for the variance today is about the reduced lot size and a reduced setback. The matter as to whether it's a large change or a small change from the existing conditions is not the question before the board. The question is for reduced lot size from a minimum requirement of five thousand square feet to approximately thirty three seven nine point five square feet, which is the question to be heard. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Um, okay, board members, uh, is there anybody that wishes to discuss or make a motion at this point?
Mr. Chairman, Jesse Lugo.
Yes, Mr. Lugo.
Uh, I move that we grant the following, uh, variance in case number C ten dash two two dash zero two to allow the lot area for eighty six West Simpson Street to be reduced on the required minimum of five thousand square feet to approximately three thousand three hundred seventy nine point five square feet. And number two, allow the building perimeter yard setback for eighty six West Simpson Street to be reduced from ten feet to four feet as measured to the reposition west lot line as shown on the submitted plans. Subject to the following conditions, there are no other ones. The evidence presented to the board shows that there are special circumstances which were not self-imposed, which are applicable to the property and support the granting of requested variances as set forth in the staff report on pages two, three, four, and findings one through seven. The variances with the conditions imposed will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or interest to other property or improvements in the neighborhood and is the amendment necessary to provide relief.
Is there a second to that motion?
Miss, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Before there's a vote, Miranda has her hand up.
Uh, thank you, Mark. Uh, yeah, just, Mr. Chair, just a point of clarification. Um, so the, because I feel that the the applicants didn't fully answer the concerns that were raised. Um, so I'm wondering, like, is that part of this hearing done or is there still an opportunity? Because for me, the hesitation comes in with the, um, I understand that what we're voting on has to do with reduced lot size and setback and that it's not about judging whether this is a large or a small change. But my understanding is that the standard is, um, enacting like the minimum changes. Um, so I I just have lingering questions about to what extent other options were explored in order to accommodate reasonable use of the property. I just feel it hasn't been fully addressed yet.
Well, let me, let me make this comment, and that is, um, that I know there was, uh, there there were comments in response by the petitioner to comments made by the, uh, the two objectors.
Mr. Chairman?
And then, Mr. Uh, oh, White indicated, you know, do I have that right? Yeah, the petitioner indicated that, uh, um, he would be willing to, um, meet with the two objectors and discuss the lot line movement in more detail and, you know, in a physical way. Um, I take him at his word. Um, I on a, you know, not independent of any motion that's being made, urge him and his wife to do just that, to get with the two parties who spoke and to clarify the uh, the concerns that they brought up. But beyond that, if there, if nothing was added to the motion that has since been seconded, uh, we can't officially modify that unless there was a amended motion made. So at this point, while I understand the concern you've raised, um, I think voting on the motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, a motion was made, we need a second, then we can have comments after that.
We did get a second, did we not?
Seconded it.
Bruce seconded it.
I heard that, yeah.
Um, can Can I just make one final comment before we move forward? It's about the harms to neighbor, to the neighborhood, right? Like, uh, you know, I understand, um, that those, uh, those standards, you know, have been considered. Um, but knowing the area and having talked to constituents in that area, like I've actually canvassed Barrio Viejo, I understand that gentrification and displacement is a major concern, um, and not only for folks who live in that area. Uh, and so I think that, I think that the harms, you know, I think one consideration should be, um, the type of land use patterns that we're supporting, um, the long-term impacts on, uh, you know, carving out a parcel of this size, like, does that support, um, further gentrification or not? And long-term, what is the impact on the community? Um, and that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. Um, but since we do have a motion on the table, I'd like to, uh, ask all parties in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, uh, anybody who oppose poses, please say nay.
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 Well, could I turn to Ms. Hamblin and ask for a roll call?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Michael Marks.
Aye.
Bruce Dawson.
Aye.
Kathy Kubish.
Nay.
Jesse Lugo.
Aye.
Lee Pagni.
Nay.
Miranda Schubert.
Nay.
Mr. Chair, we have a tie vote.
So under those circumstances, I need to ask, is there an alternative motion that any party wishes to, uh, make at this point? Well, technically, I'm not sure where we are with that impasse. If we fail to make a motion, to carry a motion in favor, and then, uh, there is no motion to deny, we're kind of stuck. Um, one alternative for, uh, the, uh, the members of the board is to make a motion in favor with conditions that might make it more amenable to to you and hopefully to other members that voted no. Um, obviously, another alternative at this point is for a board member to offer a motion to deny. But, uh, that is up to you all, not me.
If I may, uh, I was concerned hearing that the initial neighborhood meeting was predicated on like a misunderstanding of what that change was. And so for me, um, something that would make me change my position would be if I knew that the neighborhood would be okay with the change.
And that was with the location of the proposal outline.
Yeah, and just making sure that folks really feel that they've had a chance to discuss their concerns.
So as I understand that, what we would be doing would be continuing the case to a time certain such that within that time period, there would be such a either meeting to clarify that point or communication, be it in written or some other form, to all the affected parties um, to clarify that point. Is is that what you intend? Ms. Schubert?
Yes.
Okay, well, let me, let me ask Ms. Hamblin or Mr. Castro, would that be in order, a motion to continue for that purpose?
I believe that you can continue and request that the applicants clarify the issue prior to the next meeting or when date certain when we can continue that.
So the next meeting? It's May twenty fifth, correct?
Go ahead, Perry.
Hi, this is Perry Glinsky in the city attorney's office. So I'm going to need a minute to go ahead and do, um, a quick look at the rules to ensure that we're following the board rules and the, um, rules of order for when there's a tie vote. But so what I'd like to do, Mark and and, um, Mr. Chairman and members of the board is to take a a couple minutes, um, so I can look into that before we move to continue because I'm sure that there's a method for dealing with tie votes. And I I believe that Robert's rules would apply, um, if there's nothing in the board rules, but I need to familiarize myself with that, uh, process.
Okay, very good. But procedurally, could we put this matter on hold until such time later on in this meeting? Um, and then in the interim, start the second hearing? Or do we have to pause the whole hearing for the resolution of that question?
My preference would be to give me five minutes, let me look into it and then just continue.
Then we'll, we'll just pause for five minutes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I I don't know if it would help, but I'm happy to have Greg and, like I said, Juliana come over right now during this break and look at the, what I'm talking about with the pins.
Let let me interrupt, the hearing is closed, the public period is is done. Um, so, uh, if they have heard that and they want to run over to your house, that's fine, but, uh, otherwise, uh, I think we're just just gonna have to wait till we hear.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fine.
Mr. Chair, I believe we can begin. Ms. Glinsky is having issues getting back into the meeting. So she's asked that I make some statements on her behalf.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and make those comments?
Okay, so regarding the prior motion, it has failed as four votes were needed. That's just a point of clarification. Four votes are needed or a majority in order to grant the variance. The board can request a continuance of this case. That's within your authority and purview to do so. And regarding clarifications on information in the case, you can request that the applicants resolve those issues potentially with their neighbors during the meeting or prior to the next meeting. We cannot require an additional neighborhood meeting per se, but we could encourage it if that is the preference of the board.
Okay. All right, so that a motion would have to be made, seconded and carried for such a continuance, and that continuance could be to the very next meeting. That would be May twenty fifth, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, is, are all the board members present? And does anybody want to make such a motion to continue the case till May twenty fifth? With the recommendation to the petitioners to communicate with the two parties that spoke at the hearing and any other affected neighborhood members. To clarify that, that difference in distance of lot line change between what was said verbally and in the original documents versus what is now what we we know to be the case. Is there a maker of such a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Jesse Lugo, I resent my motion to approve. And as that we have a continuous for May twenty fifth, so the any pending issues can be resolved by the next meeting.
Is there a second to that motion?
Mr. Marx, I would like to second with an additional condition, please.
I'm sorry, this is Perry with the city attorney's office. I was having some issues getting back in. So point of order, the motion failed. When you were unable to get a majority. So what needs to happen now is a motion and a vote on a motion to continue if that is the board's preference. There, there doesn't need to be any rescinding or amending of the original vote. It just failed.
Understood, and we have a alternative motion that has been put on the table and now is possibly getting a second. So I think we're following your recommendation.
Got it. Thank you. I was having difficulty getting on and off on this platform. My apologies.
No problem. No, thank you for your, your advice.
Mr. Chair, I second the motion.
As, as is, as stated, without any further comment.
Without any further comment.
Okay. Let me move forward with that motion in that second. And ask, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Ms. Hamlin, can I have a roll call, please?
Michael Marx.
Aye.
Rustason.
Aye.
Kathy Kubish.
Aye.
Jesse Lugo.
Nay.
Lee Pagni.
Aye.
Miranda Schubert.
Aye.
The motion carries by a vote of five to one. Okay, we would normally say, I would let Mr. Castro please read the second case. Oh, I should let the petitioners know that the case is closed. It's, it's over for the time being, but please proceed and and communicate with your neighbors accordingly, and we'll see you again on the twenty fifth. But at this point, I'm going to excuse myself because of the time, the length of time that first case took. I apologize for this, but there is a remaining quorum. And so I'll turn the reins over to Mr. Dawson at this point, the vice chair.
Thank you.
Okay.
In that case, then, may we have, may we have staff report for where's the case? C ten twenty three dash zero three Lopez Residence Carport. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. C ten twenty two dash zero three Lopez Residence, new carports and storage shed. Antonio and Teresa Lopez nine zero two four East Kirkpatrick Circle R one. The applicant's property is an approximately eight thousand four hundred and sixty six square foot lot zone R one residential and is developed with the single family residence. The applicants constructed a carport and shed without prior zoning approval and are proposing construct the second carport attached to the front of the residence. The applicants are requesting the following variances. One, to allow an existing carport to remain with the reduced side perimeter yard setback from six feet to zero feet as measured to the west lot line. And two, allow an existing storage shed to remain with the reduced side perimeter yard setback from six feet to zero feet as measured to the east lot line. Allow a new carport with a reduced front street perimeter yard setback from twenty feet to four feet measured to the north lot line. The engineering section of planning and development services has no objection or adverse comments. Planning and development services staff has no objections to the applicant's requested variances subject to the following conditions. No motor vehicle parking in the area between the carport attached to the front of the residence and the street. B, carport at the front of the residence shall not be enclosed. And C, existing carport on the west side shall comply with the fire code in every aspect. It is the opinion of staff that there are special circumstances applicable to the property that granting of the variances will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other property or improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located. And that the variance requested is the minimum needed to afford relief and the least modification possible of those UDC provisions which are in question. Today, we have received the total of one written protest. For the record, board members have been provided a copy of the submitted comments. Mr. Chair, members of the board, this concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, thank you, Mark. Are there any questions for staff and board? Hearing none. I would say, is there, we'll open it up to the petitioners, is the petitioner's president at the meeting?
Yes, sir, Mr. Lopez here.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lopez, will you please raise your right hand? Swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed.
As was stated before, my original two requests for variances were constructed with no knowledge of the variances and all that. They were my mistakes. They are on the property line. They're not straddling, they're not impeding on anybody else in my neighborhood. The carport in question in front of the property toward the street is completed. It was permitted back in twenty twenty. And I have the permits and everything. Somehow, when I started doing the inspections, as I was finishing up the roofing, it triggered the variance requirements. Causing more confusion, more delays. So here where I am now is waiting on approval for the variances. Just to get everything legal. As far as the city goes. That's all I have over this topic.
Hey, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this variance? Seeing none. Is there are any questions from the board for the petition?
I have a question. I have a question.
Okay. Kathy?
Mr. Lopez, as I understand it, you are requesting permission in retrospect for a carport and porch extension that is already done. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, hearing none. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to this variance? Hearing none. I will look then for a someone to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve this variance.
Mr. Chair? Yes, Mark. Mr. Chair, you, as a point of order, you'll need to close the public hearing first before a motion can be made. My apologies, I'm new at this. Okay, then backing up. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address the board at this point? Hearing none, I will then therefore close the public hearing in this regard. That being said, I will need a motion.
Do you need me to make a motion again?
I think I need to make, have you make a motion again, because I got ahead of myself there. I apologize.
Okay, this will be the legitimate, I vote that we approve the variance.
A point of order, do we need to go through the entire statement?
Yeah, that'll clear. Perry Glinsky in the city attorney's office, if the motion could be read into the record as presented on the template.
Okay. Kathy, would you please read the would you please read the motion as it's printed here for the record?
Yes, sir. I move that we grant the following variances in case C ten dash twenty two dash zero three. Number one, allow an existing carport to remain with a reduced side perimeter yard setback from six feet to zero feet as measured to the west lot line. Allow an existing storage shed to remain with the reduced side perimeter yard setback from six feet to zero feet as measured to the east lot line. Number three, allow a new carport with reduced front street perimeter yard setback from twenty feet to four feet as measured to the north lot line.
Hey.
Do you wish me to continue?
I think so. I, I'm pretty sure we need to read this whole thing.
Okay. Subject to the following conditions. A, no motor vehicle parking in the area between the carport attached to the front of the residence and the street. B, carport at the front of the residence shall not be enclosed. C, existing carport on west side shall comply with the fire code in every aspect.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor. I will need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, very well, he's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Let's go for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you very much. We can let's see, do we move on, Mark? Yeah, Mr. Lopez, your motion has been approved, so good luck with the rest of your project.
Thank you all. Thank you very much for your consideration. Appreciate the help.
Okay, Mark. Are we ready for the next case? Huh? Ready for the next case? Good, ready for the next case. Let's we staff report for this next case. Next case is C ten dash twenty two dash zero four Alpha Chi Omega Sorority House. Alpha Chi Omega National Housing Corporation seventeen seventy five East First Street R three. The applicant's property is an approximately half acre lot zone R three residential and is developed with the sorority house. The applicant is proposing to construct a two-story addition to the existing sorority house, which includes demolishing a portion of the existing one-story building. The applicant is requesting the following variances. Allow a rude side street perimeter yard setback from ten feet to three point zero feet as measured from the proposed building addition to the east property line. Allow the number of required vehicle parking spaces to be reduced from thirty six spaces to twenty five spaces, eleven on site and fourteen in the right way. And allow maneuvering directly into the alley and street for the fourteen parking spaces located in the right way along the north alley and Martin Avenue, all as shown on the plans. The engineering planks, the engineering section of planning and development services has no objection or adverse comments. Planning and developments or staff recommends approval of the applicant's requested variances. It is the opinion of staff that there are special circumstances applicable to the property, granting of the variance will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other property improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located. And that variances requested are the minimum needed to afford relief and the least modification possible of those UDC provisions which are in question. The date we have received the total of two written approvals and zero written protests. For the record, board members have been provided copies of the approval forms. Mr. Chair and members of the board, this concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Mark. Are there any questions for staff from the board? There are none. So is, I will open the public hearing to the petitioners. Is there anyone from the petitioner in the audience?
Yes. I am here.
Would you state your name, please?
My name's Kyle Ray.
Okay, Kyle, would you raise your right hand? Right hand, I'm sorry. You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Good, very good. Please proceed.
All right, I, I prepared just a brief PowerPoint just to show the scope of our project and the site plan of, of the variances. So I'll share that. Everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so the first slide here is just the aerial of the subject property. It's, it's at the corner of North Martin and East First Street. It's, it's surrounded by other Greek houses as well as some retail to the north or across the alleyway. The areas and where we're doing the additions are shown here in the red. And the scope of the project, the need for the additions are, as the growing needs of, you know, Greek housing, student housing on campuses. And, you know, the programmatic needs have changed over time since these houses were designed and built. In this case, this one was designed in nineteen sixty three. So with the additional population So uh, with the uh, the additional population in these houses, we're the, the uh the uh, owner, I, Akio is seeking to uh, expand dining, study spaces, you know, uh, public spaces like that and, and then uh, and internally in a renovation to add some of those amenity type spaces, uh, study spaces and then the, the displaced sleeping rooms in those areas will then be in this addition uh, on the second floor. So um so in this area here is, is the main two-story addition with the dining and the sleeping rooms. And then this is a, a, another a study social space uh, here addition on the back. Um, to support some of the uh, programmatic needs again of the, the sorority uh, this day and time. So this is the site plan. Uh, the, the, the first variance we were seeking was the setback variance from ten feet to three point zero four, and that's on this east side property line here, uh where uh, adjacent to uh, north or, or Martin Street there. Uh, variance number two is, so as a role, result of the project, we're not in compliance of the required parking, which is thirty-six spaces if you calculate it based on the bed count. And so uh, the existing spaces, there were, there were twelve here and then they, they, they have uh reserve spaces here of seven and then uh, seven here on North Martin. Um during the course of this project, we've uh uh, dimensionally upgraded the parking lot and added a, an accessible parking space. So what that did is that reduced the uh, spaces in, in this area here to eleven from twelve and then and uh, and then if you add the seven and seven of, which is fourteen, it, it comes up to twenty-five. So we're seeking relief on the required parking. Uh, they're basically going to be using it the way they've always used it, minus one spot with, with the accessible spot being added. And again, that's, that's per uh, current zoning requirements we're adding that. So the those, you guys are probably familiar with this and seen images, but this is the front elevation. The addition is, is, would be continuing on this second floor roof line, and I've got some perspective images coming up soon that will show that intact, but that's kind of the, the scope of the two-story. This one-story piece will remain in, in place. This is the side elevation where this two-story piece here would just be continued on to try to match the existing architecture and make it look seamless to where it was originally designed with the original house. And then this is the rear alley view where uh, there's a modest addition back here. And then this is the parking lot that we were modifying dimensionally and adding the, the uh, accessible parking space in this area right here with an accessible walk to the side of the house or to the rear of the house. Uh, this is just a diagram of the new plan of, of the, the this line here is where the existing houses of one story and then we're, this, this is really the expansion of the footprint here. But it, but this all will become two-story here as opposed to the one-story currently. And then this is that, that uh, two-story addition on the back for these uh, study and social spaces added back here. And then this is the second floor. And so this is where the additional sleeping rooms were added because we've taken out sleeping rooms to create some of these public uh, executive conference rooms, you know, study spaces, et cetera. So we had to, to pick up beds from the renovation piece in, over the new dining expansion. And these are elevations showing, you know, just the pieces that were, that are part of the, the new addition highlighted in red. And this is a, this kind of a before and after perspective image of, you know, this is the existing here and then this is where the two-story addition is occurring and this, the same rhythm bendos, everything, same roof line that we've uh, currently have is what we're proposing at this point. So that's the, the end of my presentation. Anybody's got any questions?
Uh, thank you. Do we have any questions for uh? Uh, petitioner? Don't see you. Thank you for the very nice presentation. Um the uh help me understand. I was looking at the uh, at the plans and uh, so this is very helpful in understanding which parts were two-story and which parts weren't, so thank you for that. Uh we don't have any questions? There are no, no questions for the petitioner at all? Okay, uh is there uh? See, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to this or anyone additional that wishes to speak for this? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? There are none. I will therefore uh close it. Well, wait, I guess I should ask the board. Do the board have any questions for anybody? I don't hear any, so therefore I do close the public hearing in this regard. And that being said, I will need a uh, a motion.
Mr. Chairman, Jesse Lugo.
Yes, sir.
I motion to grant a, a move that we grant the following variance in case number C ten dash two-two dash zero four one, allow a reduced side street perimeter set, yard setback from ten feet to three point zero four feet as measured from the proposed building addition to the east property line. Number two, allow the number required vehicles parking spaces to be reduced from thirty-six spaces to twenty-five spaces. Uh, eleven on site, fourteen in the right of way and three, allow maneuvering directly into the alley and the street for the fourteen parking spaces located in the right of way along the north alley and Martin Avenue, all as shown on the submitted plans. Subject to the following conditions, there are none. The evidence presented to the board shows that they are special circumstances which were not self-imposed and are applicable to the property and support the granting of the requested variance as set forth in staff report on pages two, three, and four, findings one through seven, and and the variance with the conditions imposed will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to the other property or the improvements in the neighborhood and is in the minimum necessary to provide relief.
Thank you. I will need a second to that motion. No, I'm willing to second the motion.
I, I, I will second the motion.
Thank you. Uh, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Uh, I will move to the vote. Uh, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Are there anyone, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Uh, thank you, sir, for uh, uh, Mr. Ray, for your presentation. Uh, good luck with your project.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Uh the uh, hearing on this is now closed. The uh uh, there are no further, um there are no further items on the agenda. Um, just to clarify, do I need a motion to uh, adjourn?
No, Mr. Chair, you can adjourn.
Okay, I'm gonna do it then. You are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Uh, I appreciate your input and uh we'll see you next time.
Thank you, Bruce. Did a great job.
Thank you, everyone.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Uh, Mark? Mark? Oh, Mark?
Oh, there you go. Sorry, I was trying to find the mute button.
No problem. Um, hey, is uh, just a point of business. Um there's uh, on the printed agenda, there's other businesses uh, after adjournment. Uh, is that important to anything that goes on or?
The other business items?
Huh? Yeah.
Are you talking?
The agenda that I got.
Okay, yeah, the other business items, those are, we keep those on the agenda whenever we do have the opportunity to do training, so then the opportunity for any of the board members to speak on any other items, so that's always included in the agenda, but um, hopefully with, we'd get Roy back next month, we can do the training then.
Sounds good to me. Uh, it's a, a, a request. Uh, could I get a um copy of, Mike uh, reads a, a preamble there.